Thank you, welcome back to the Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 meeting of the Hop Hop Union Free School District Board of Education. We're back for executive session, kindly rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. And after the pledge, please join me in a moment of silence acknowledging prohala day. Pledge allegiance. Thank you. God bless America. Number four on the agenda is superintendent's update, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you. I'm actually going to give my time back. We have some students in the audience tonight and would rather hear from them than from me.
Very good, thank you. Number five on the agenda, recognition awards, presentations and adoption of minutes. Very quickly, 5C is the adoption of minutes in the community meeting of November 16th, 2021. The motion is to approve those meetings as amended. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Scrito. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Fortmeyer. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, sentience? Motion passes 402, Mr. Barshay and Mr. Dr. Pratt, I was saying. 5A is recognition and rewards. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, Mrs. Gordon, please come on up.
Mrs. Gordon.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us back here for awards. I think we're the first awards since COVID, so thank you very much for supporting our students and supporting us in having awards. Mr. Sheehan is here with me to honor some social studies students. Unfortunately, Mr. Reeve was unable to attend, but we are recognizing our students who placed in the Veterans of Farm War Post 10870 Voices of Democracy Competition. The students in AP Government and Politics and IB History II classes participated in this local competition against Smithtown East and Smithtown West. This year's theme was America. Where do we go from here? We have two of the students, I believe, two of the students who placed in the competition that are here. The other students, we have Isabella Calvalo from Mr. Sheehan's IB History class. And we also have Jessica Sconzo from Mr. Sheehan's IB History class who are not with us. But winning first place in our local competition with Smithtown East and Smithtown West was Varshabne Rastipachanda. You can come on up. Mother Gabriela Iscana. Gabriela was in AP Government and Politics with Mr. Reeve. And Gabriela was in Mr. Sheehan's IB History class. These students wrote the essay, recorded the essay, competed in this competition. And we're happy to say that Hop Hop plays first and second. Smithtown West, I believe, got a third place, so we're really proud of all of your efforts. And we're really proud of what our students are able to do and how resilient they are. And their essays really demonstrated where we can go as Americans from here forward. And we're really proud of everything that they did, so thank you again for allowing us to recognize them.
Take a picture, hand me the. Hand me the certificates out.
Yeah, you have to just hold them up right in front of you. Start running this thing. It's just going up here. Really good here? There we go. No problem. Wait, we're doing a little bit on there. Thanks, guys.
5C on the agenda is Presentation High School Vocational Program, Ms. Belsky.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us the opportunity to present on our program tonight. We're so very proud of our students and our staff and all of those that work so hard to support this program every day. Thank you to the central office team for always supporting us. Again, wavering support is amazing and we're so grateful for all of it. The TAs and support staff, I'm not sure if anybody made it tonight, but the team that works with these students every single day is holds a very special place in my heart. We're so grateful for their hard work. The teachers, related service providers, behavior consultants, some of which are here with us tonight. We're just so excited to share about the work that these heroes do every single day for our students and our school. We're here to present on our vocational program in the high school, which we really want our community and our students to feel proud of. So we all met as a team and decided to kind of rename, this is sort of a ribbon cutting ceremony, I guess you would say. We're calling it the Eagles Career Academy. And it's a place where students learn academics, they learn vocational skills, life skills, social skills. We're going to talk about all the different components of our program. We have Ms. McGowan here, one of our classroom teachers, to present on the Paze Lab. Ms. Braun, the other teacher in our vocational program, she couldn't be with us tonight. But we do have Ms. Patraco, our speech therapist, Ms. Kristina Body, the behavior consultant in our program. And we have Ms. Skaka, one of our elementary school teachers, who so willingly volunteered to allow our students to do an internship in her program at Forest Brook this year. So we're just so grateful for their attendance. Okay, so Mr. McGowan, you're going to open up with the Paze Lab.
All right, to McGowan, thanks for having me. I'm going to introduce the Paze Lab. My first time working this clicker. Okay, so the Paze Lab, so it stands for it's the Practical Assessment Exploration System. That's some pictures from our actual classroom. I'll get into it quickly when you get there. Great start. All right, so each day when the students start, they have to clock in, you can see on the bottom right. So their names are on the board, they find their name, they clock in, and then they go. It'd be easier if you were in the room, obviously, but we're not. They pick up a folder and there's a job card in there for them. There's 265 jobs within the Paze Lab, which is great. So, you know, in a given school year, we started last year, they will not get to each job. They will probably, you know, go through a couple of years, and we have the kids for a couple of years, which is great to get through a majority of the jobs. That's kind of what they do when they first come in. The things that the Paze Lab provides, its work in life skills training, vocational work assessment, work exploration, appropriate work behavior, data collection and student reporting, an accurate description of student performance and employment potential, which we'll kind of sum up at the end. First component is computer technology. I'm not going to read through each one, you can kind of see through it. That's two of our students actually working in the lab this year. Another component is construction industrial. And again, some students might have an affinity for this area, they might be skilled in this area, some students are not, that's fine. That's part of what the lab provides, we can see what they're good at and what skills they can kind of acquire and use and build on going forward. We have a processing and production component. You'll see things like bolt assembly, pipe assembly, form design, tag design. Again, these are all our kids working in the lab. Consumer service, there's a cooking component, you know, that goes anywhere from making hot chocolate to putting, you know, popcorn microwave. You see the student on the left, he's actually wrapping hamburgers, you know, to fold them the right way, put them on the tray, to organize those appropriately. Measuring, he's measuring, I think it's beans there to put into bags. So all different components that they can use and learn, which is great. Last one is the business marketing aspect. You'll see things here, advertising and identifying filing, numerical sorting, working the cash register, which you get, which is going to be a great skill for our guys going forward. And then kind of at the end, I try to get a picture of what we, what you guys would see or the parent would see. Basically, at the end, you'll have a daily record of the attempted and successful jobs. Some students will be great at certain jobs, some students will struggle in certain jobs. But when they leave my room to go to Mrs. Braun, when they leave here at 21, they will have an accurate description. The parents will have an accurate description of the area where they can potentially get a job going forward as adults with some of the skills that they learned in the lab. It'll have the quality of the work that's completed, it'll have their work rate, number of trials, again, if we were in the room, it'd be easier. And again, I think the best aspect are, is the skills that they learned, they're working in an instruction environment. They have to call us over when they're done, like supervisor, like you wouldn't a job. So they're learning appropriate skills. If one student finishes their job early, there's others that are working, so they have to learn how to kind of be quiet while others finish working. So all the appropriate skills that they're going to need going forward. So that's our Paze Lab. Thank you.
So the Paze Lab was something that was brought up to me at one of the very first staff meetings I ever did here in Hop Hop. We did have one in my previous district, but a parent had brought it up and I said, I'll absolutely listen to it, I love the idea. So it's so nice to kind of see a conversation that starts, I think, Mr. Scrito, you were at that meeting. We had a discussion about what it was and we used grant money to fund the program. And it's really grown into be such a successful part of our program, especially during COVID, when the students couldn't go out on their internships. They still provided them with an opportunity to build those work and vocational skills. So something we're very proud of here in the district. Internships is a very special program that we have here in the district. So Ms. Skaka, she is, like I said, a special education teacher in Forest Brook. She's going to speak a little bit about our internship program. We have Joseph here tonight, Joseph, can you wave to everybody? He supports us here in the district office, he does custodial work here. He also goes to Forest Brook, he does custodial work, right, Joseph? Do you like one of Forest Brook?
Yes, I did.
You do a wonderful job. You love having me. You love Forest Brook. Good. And we have Shaquela. Shaquela, why don't you stand up? Shaquela participates as a paraprofessional in Ms. Skapa's class, so she'll talk a little bit about that.
So some of the internships, so I don't work at the high school, I work at the elementary school. I'm an elementary school teacher in our C D one-one program. So some of the vocational training sites that we have though are PETA Pitt, which I believe Shaquela, you go there too, right? So PETA Pitt, some of our students do custodial work at Forest Brook. They come to the coffee center, the kitchen, and they come into my classroom, which is a lot of fun. So my internship with Ms. Shaquela, Shaquela, you want to come on up? So this is Ms. Shaquela, that's what our students refer to her as, yes? Ms. Shaquela comes into my classroom and she works one-on-one with all of my students. And I'm going to say very strongly that she can work with some very difficult kids. And she does it with grace and honor every single day with a smile on her face. Well, every Tuesday and Thursday, that's when Ms. Shaquela comes with us. She gives them redirection, she helps them during lunchtime. We have some kids who don't like to eat, she helps to reinforce their eating habits. She teaches them play skills, we do conversation skills, sportsmanship, we do crafts together. Did you want to say anything else about what we do?
Um, we go outside and go to the gym. And sometimes we make artwork too. And I hope one of the kids in the classroom, you know, eat her food, you know, made her a bracelet.
Yes, you did. And how do you like it? You like it so far?
Yes, I love the work in there.
We love having you. And then we have our custodial team, thank you, Shaquela, we have Gio. All these people here, we're really hard with Mr. Mark and Mr. Steve, our custodians at Forest Brook Elementary School. And they help clean in the classroom, they clean the offices, garbage disposal, that's like a big thing, right Gio? We call you all the time and we're like, excuse me, Mr. Gio, can you come and help us with our garbage? And what do you do?
I do it.
You come, right, you're amazing. They clean the floors, they do some painting over the summer, cleaning the windows. Yeah, cleaning at the high school, you did, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Anything else you want to add about Forest Brook?
I like clean windows.
Yeah, you're really good at it. And you two draw anything?
Yeah.
You like it, right?
I like Forest Brook.
Fantastic, and we love having you guys.
What's your favorite part of the internship, Gio?
Because I like district office.
A good part is sweeping.
You like sweeping?
And living.
Joe, what's your favorite part?
Maybe it was district office.
You like coming to district office?
District office and they help clean the offices, the hallways, all the railings, the windows, they do a wonderful job. So thank you, boys, so much. We're so proud of you. A lot of hard work. Okay, we invited Ms. Patraco because without her expertise in speech and language, we wouldn't have all these wonderful opportunities.
Oh, thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Ashel Patraco, I'm the speech therapist at the high school. And I work very closely with the vocational skills program. I'm very lucky, I get to work with all the students in the program. And some of the things that we do, my primary focus is working on functional communication skills that students can use not only in the classroom or the therapy room, but at home and on their internship and in the community. So it's important that they generalize those skills. Some of the things we work on, helping them learn strategies to understand and clarify directions, which is very needed for an internship or for job skill training. We work with them on requesting help and assistance, so that if they're not frustrated, then they know effective ways for it to offer to speak when needed. Social skills in terms of different communication partners. So not only is a teacher or a staff member, but, you know, a job coach or a community member or family member. So really learning appropriate social interactions in different settings. And then more specific speech skills, we always address articulation, volume and rate, as well as focusing on the nonverbal skills, which can be a little tricky for some students, like added language and gestures and visual expressions, and really kind of learning the hidden meaning behind, you know, those skills. So, you know, by addressing these skills, it helps them to really generalize and be able to have better success, you know, in different areas, especially the home and the community. So it's very exciting to work with them. Shaquela, what do you like about speech? What have you learned in your speech session?
I learned how to make a sensitive sentence properly.
Aw, very good. Gio, what about you?
I have a conversation.
Okay, good. Joe, what do you like to do in speech?
Well, I like about the weekend.
You like talking about your weekends? Okay, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Body in the class, she is really the brains behind our student business this year, which started last year of Hop Hop Hound, which I'm sure you've seen on social media and at some of our events. She is a lifeline, you often talk on the phone one at 6:30 in the morning or 10 o'clock at night on Saturdays and Sundays. Don't apologize, I appreciate it, so just so grateful to have her with us.
Hi, everyone. So I have a few different hats here. So one of the major roles that I do here at Hop Hop is offer behavior support. So people refer to me as behavior consultant, behavior specialist, that's me. I support teachers in anything to do with students' behavior, shaping students' behavior, increasing, decreasing, helping students stay on task, staying engaged, helping teachers feel supported, teaching, training teacher assistants, training special ed.
I could forward that.
Okay. Okay. I'm also in the Extended School Day teacher, which is a program that is at the high school Monday, Wednesday, Friday after school, where the students, it's an IEP service. The students stay after school and they get a little extra and it's great. It's a non-academic program where we have a lot of fun, practice leisure skills. And that's kind of where our Hop Hop Hound started, which I'll tell you about in a minute. I work closely with administration, school psychologists, writing all the FBAs and the BIPs. An FBA is like a functional behavior assessment, a BIP is a behavioral plan. I create behavior tools for teachers and students. So like you see in the middle here, that's a little visual schedule for some of our little guys in the elementary school. Helps them stay on task, know what's coming, and you see some token boards. So things like that I'll provide for students, individualized. Okay, so this is our Extended School Day program. So we do anything from crafts to cooking. We do a lot of leisure skills, play skills, current events, things like that. And this is where Hop Hop Hound started because when I started doing Extended School Day about six years ago, we did a lot of cooking. And of course, the kids love to cook, right? Who doesn't love to cook? And of course, they love to eat also. And so with COVID, we weren't allowed to cook. So a lot, a large part of our program was missing and the kids were really missing it, the students were really missing it. So they were like, we really miss cooking. I'm like, well, if we can't cook for people, maybe we can cook for animals. So I got the green light and we went ahead and I could never imagine that it has taken off like it has. It's like become a thing now. So we're doing it a few times a year, we have some for sale for the holidays over there in the basket. I tell you that if you have any interest, grab a bag and get me the money later because there's no preservatives in them and they are fresh right now. So take them home, stick them in your freezer, your pups will love them, and send the money with your child teacher. But all the money goes right back into the program. Some things that we have done with the money is, you know, just buy different materials for the program, buy things for the kids. We do lots of pizza parties and things like that, you say love that.
Oh, go back. Yeah?
Okay, thank you.
I was, Braun totally said that she couldn't be here tonight, so she worked to create a video with the students and some of our students that couldn't be here. So it's just a short little video of them kind of talking about their internship and the program, so. Make sure that we recognize all of our participants who can be here with us. So just lastly, just so grateful and honored to be part of the Hop Hop community here for the team, for the students, for the families, the administration and board for the unwavering support. Thank you so much. And have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson, we want to thank you for being the lead here with these efforts. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson, I can ask you a question. Besides PETA Pit, are there other companies that are supporting our students in our community we should be aware of? I mean, we should be patronizing these places that are helping our community.
Currently, PETA Pit is the one company that has agreed to let our students back into the community. But we used to go to, what are some of the other places? Asmart?
Yeah, we did Asmart, TJ Maxx.
TJ Maxx, Mama Angelina's, and Peck House. But we're not currently there because of COVID restrictions. But we are in the process of setting up. Is Gio going to U C P? Yeah, so United Center for Super Quality. Gio is in the process of setting up his internship to go there, right? So U C P, we're so excited to partner with them. So we are working again to partner with community too. Do you know anybody that needs student interns? Tell them to reach out to me and we'd love to.
And we can also get a list, you know, I think the community should be aware of these places, you know.
Sure.
Help them out.
Thank you. It's a great idea.
And Mrs. Body, how much of the dog biscuits and people will buy?
Oh, thank you. They're five dollars a bag.
Thank you. Refrigerator freeze.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we take a break, we're gonna pull one item forward. Seven point three G one is a donation. Murphy?
Yes, Griffin, are you in the audience? I can see him in the back there. So we're recognizing Griffin Kapisky tonight with a very generous donation. Griffin's been working on his Eagle Scout service project, which is an important step in becoming an Eagle Scout. Focused at the high school, it was two benches there, which includes pavers, landscaping, and the pool entrance sign. So that includes a ton of fundraising and planning and collaboration and leadership, of course. So we're here to recognize Griffin. Griffin, if you can stand. In addition to the two benches, I think there was some money left over from your fundraising efforts. Hundred twenty-five thousand forty-seven cents. So thank you so much, Griffin, for giving back to the school and good luck finishing up your Eagle Scout work. Mr. Bruza, you were his coach last night?
Mr. Bruza, you want to be in?
Okay, before we move on to the rest of the agenda, we'll take a five-minute break to allow people to leave if they want to leave. We will reconvene at eight forty exactly. Thank you. Any comments on tonight's agenda only? Any members or anyone in the audience have questions concerning tonight's agenda only? Joe, you have a question?
No.
Consent agenda, are there any items that members would like to have removed? I will remove seven point two A five and seven point two, sorry, seven point three G one is already there. Any other matters that members would like to have removed? If that'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda, less. Less seven point two A five and seven point three G one. Thank you, Mr. Scrito, Mr. Fortmire with second discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, five, six zero one. Seven point two A five, appointment of substitutes, direct motion. Thank you, Mr. Fortmire, go with second. Dr. Crafton, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, five zero one, Mr. Barshay abstaining. That concludes the consent agenda. Seven point three A one, I did not. I did, I did G one, which was Griffin.
Oh, G one.
Yep, it's okay. Policies A, B, C, and D are all on the first reading. Any comments from the board concerning those items? Those items will be returned to the policy committee and will be on our next agenda in January for second reading and adoption. Discussion matters, there are none new business. Do any board members have new business? Mr. Scrito?
I just want to thank you once again for crossing guards and doing a fantastic job. And I really appreciate the security guards, it gets colder out there. I just want to make sure, we're thanking them, that's a heck of a job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scrito, Mr. Fortmire?
Uh, yeah, I have a question for Bridget concerning the budget. This year, starting in January, the health insurance rates, the night shift rates have gone up fairly significantly, in the order of eleven to twelve percent, almost thirty percent. What do we have in the budget in terms of the contingency percentage for covering the increase of grand souls?
Thanks for sharing. So school districts typically budget about ten to fifteen percent because usually night shift, they will inform districts a little bit later in the process. So about ten to fifteen percent.
Good. Any other new business? Administration, any new business? Questions and comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Yes, Mr. Bruza, you had your hand up first. Can you, do you mind coming up to the, to the, to the mic? You do mind?
Do I have to?
Well, no, just speak very loudly then. There's people, I want to hear your questions.
When we, when we form committees?
Yes.
Facility committee, can we pick? Can we remember to get the list out of who you pick beyond the different committees?
Yeah, so, yep, so those are almost always on the agenda. When we're doing committees, which is every other meeting, but we'll make sure, we'll make sure that usually it lists the committee and the members.
And the, what you, the community members too.
Yes.
How do you form, can we get their name on, who's in every committee?
Sure. I mean, the, the, the community members on the committees, it's fairly rare. But for the, well.
Curriculum and instruction, yeah, we'll, we'll post the names of committees on our website.
Are you volunteering, Mr. Bruza?
What?
Are you volunteering?
You send it out every year. I think you do send out a volunteer list.
Yes.
Just like to know who you pick?
Fair enough.
Same person or, so we get a list.
Yep, very good. We'll do. That should be on the next agenda if it's not, calls on it. Any other questions, comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Yes, sir? If, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is George Horver. I've been a Hop Hop resident for twenty-nine years. I've had two daughters that have passed through this district. They've done quite well. They've flourished because of the teachers, of faculty. I presently have a son who's in seventh grade, he plays middle school sports. He loves school, he loves the teachers, he loves the guidance, he loves the guidance councils, he loves everything about it. Currently, there is an issue that's been, you know, on the minds of myself and a bunch of other parents. And it's the condition of the middle school athletic facilities and some of the high school facilities too. It's not just, you know, one field or anything like that, it's, it's the grounds itself as a whole. We all know that most of the grounds are from originally when the school was built. The handball court, although it's got a new coat of paint on it. You know, the pavements some are, tennis courts are, are, could use a little bit of the baseball, the baseball fields. The middle school gym, I attended a game last week, the seventh, eighth grade basketball game, first game of the year. And not just myself and some of the home fans, but the visiting fans were shocked at the condition of the middle school basketball court. I'd just like to know if, you know, you guys put it on your radar to maybe somehow find some additional funds or resources to maybe improve these facilities.
May I stand? It's okay. First of all, Mr. Holler, I want to thank you for coming down tonight and putting this on our radar. I also want to thank you for a lot of volunteer work you do at H Y O. We know that you put in some time there. The points you raised are good ones. You know, the tennis courts and these other items have been on our radar. Some of them are being addressed by bonds, some of them we're trying to find money for. So I spoke last night with Mr. Capano and Mr. Anachi about working together with parents, the board and administration working together with parents. We're really boots on the ground, this stuff, you see what's going on in the building sometimes more than we do on the support side of things. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna form a committee, a joint committee of board members and members from H Y O and anyone else that wants to join. And it's gonna be part of our facilities committee. It'll meet the same days as our facilities committee meets. And we'll talk of ways to solve and address some of these issues to the extent we can. You know, a lot of times, board members don't have the knowledge of what is exactly going on, you know, in the gyms after hours and stuff like that, and the shortcomings that we may have with facilities. So I'm gonna send an invite out to Mr. Capano and H Y O to give us a couple of members, and we'll have a couple of members from the board and a couple of members from the administration. And it'll be a regular ad hoc committee that meets once a month and discusses the issues and tries to find ways to, to solve, you know, the shortcomings that we have. But we hear you, we're aware of some of it, but you know, the more information you give us, the better.
Yeah, that would be great. I appreciate it. You know, the seventh, eighth graders, that's kind of like the feeder system to the JV varsity. And you got yourself a nice group of kids out there. And, you know, it means a lot when they do a play at a nicer facility. It kind of breeds confidence, success, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, no doubt about it. You know, this, this board, we put the turf field in, well, community, we proposed it to the community, the community supported it, thank God. That was one step, you know, and well, helped revolutionize the world since then. But we'd love to get back on track and the help that you can give us and the other members of the community would be great on that committee. And if things can be addressed, if things can be done, we'll get them done.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, Ms. Butler? Yes, you can be on the committee.
Just, just as an aside, the middle school gym floor will be refinished over the break. It takes about five or six days for it to cure properly. So we're looking for a time when it will be least intrusive to our school groups and our outside groups. The high school floor was done over Thanksgiving break. The middle school floor will be refinished over the Christmas break, so that should help a lot.
George, was that where you noticed the middle school was the floor in district repair with our other items as well?
No, it was mainly the floor.
Okay. At least we're attempting to address one of those items. But we'll keep going and keep the momentum going.
It's historic, really.
Yeah, Mr. Butler, if you could be on that committee, it would be helpful.
Lovely, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Mr. Bruza, you want to on that committee? Mr. Bruza, you want on the committee?
Maybe, yes, send an invite. Everybody gets it.
Anyone else?
I know you give me the list.
Yeah, no, no, no.
That's what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, uh any, before we go to the virtual question, uh any further questions from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever? Dr. Murphy?
Yeah, so a question came in, um from Ms. Graziano. Can we revisit the ban for sixth graders now participating in sports? I understand um on the district, may our participation. Uh, so I checked with my resident colleague expert, Mr. Tasman, Mr. Totten, Mitch, and Bruce as well. Um, it's it's uh not allowed, right, as of Section 11 in New York State public high school sports. Uh, they can't participate in the scholastic athletics until seventh grade.
We have no discretion there at all? I'm sorry?
No, we don't.
Any further uh virtual questions?
Uh, no, there was one, but you're the gentleman who asked the virtual question.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Any any further questions based upon the one virtual question that we had? So our next meeting is um January eleventh, excuse me, one second. There'll be no executive session uh tonight. Our next meeting is January eleventh, uh twenty twenty-two. Do I have a make, do I have a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Mr. Fortmire, Mr. Tyler, the second day discussion. With that, how we call the vote? Six zero, we are adjourned. Uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. That to you especially. Good night. Good night.